My daughter already told me.
I was gonna say something to you today, I thought.
All right, it is Monday.
Recording in progress.
Monday, October nineteenth at six o'clock, and we'll call our meeting order, start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the roll call.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Do we have an approval of tonight's agenda?
Affirmed.
Motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Bennett? If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, it's public participation. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to address the council? If not, we'll move on to presentations. And item A is Erin McCully with the chamber report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to take a few minutes to highlight some of the last few months of the chamber, but I first will introduce myself to those of you who may not know me yet. I am Erin McCully, and I was hired as Executive Director at the beginning of November. I'm originally from Macokota and recently moved back to the area shortly before accepting this role. I know there has been a lot of turnover in the chamber in the last few years, but I'm not planning on going anywhere. Linda Tenny and I are very excited to keep the chamber moving in a positive direction. The chamber had a very successful finish to the year. Our Holiday Passport Program and its It's a Wonderful Life event went very well. This year, in just a six-week time period, there was over $176,000 spent locally in our Holiday Passport Shop Local program. We had 32 businesses participate, and there were 1,178 passports turned in. This was up almost $50,000 from last year, and it was done in a timeframe that was two weeks shorter. The community really stepped up and supported local businesses this holiday season. Along with our passport program, our It's a Wonderful Life event was a huge success as well. Al Mulhouseen was a huge help to us as we started the day at the fire station, with kids' activities sponsored by local civic groups and businesses, a visit with Santa and Mrs. Claus, food provided by the Kiwanis Club, and hot chocolate provided by Scooters. The fire station was packed the entire time, and the attendance was more than doubled from last year. We had over 200 kids registered for prizes. After the events at the fire station, we went to the green space where there were fire pits and spores provided by Camp Shalom and a live nativity scene with First Lutheran Church. We had the drawing for prizes and did a tree lighting with Santa. A huge thank you goes out to Public Works and MMEU for all the help with the tree and the green space and allowing us to put up even more lights this year. We received great feedback from the community and are looking forward to continuing it. In December, we also brought back the downtown music system and had Christmas music playing from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. daily. We've received many great compliments on this and are looking forward to making it a regular thing throughout the year. Leadership Macokota continued during the fourth quarter, and based on the response from participants and panel members, it continued to be a very successful program. We had 12 participants this year from eight different businesses, along with two high school students. This program will be returning in 2024, and we are looking forward to another great round of sessions and experiences. We are also happy to announce that in December, we decided to bring back the Timber City Adventure Race for 2024. Details have not been announced yet, but we are looking at a date late in June and are excited to get the ball rolling. We had a total of nine new members last year and have six new so far this year since January. With a couple dropped memberships due to no longer being in business, we are currently sitting at 200 active members with several prospective members that I have been speaking with. This number seems about average as I look back for membership totals over the last several years, and I look forward to increasing that number moving forward. Overall, we feel we ended the year on a very positive note and are looking forward to a very successful 2024.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Anybody have any questions?
No, it's a great job.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, public hearings. We don't have any public hearings, so we'll go on to the consent agenda. It consists of the minutes of the February 5th, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting, bills payable through February 19th, 2024 in the amount of $863,227.67, our January financial reports, the appointment of Adelis Schroeder to the Civil Service Commission, renewal of a Class E alcohol license, and ownership change for Casey's General Store, number 2578, and a proclamation proclaiming April 26th, 2024 as Arbor Day. Motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Rick Earl? Have no discussion, take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item nine, old business. A is an ordinance, number 1214, an ordinance adopting the Code of Ordinances of the City of Macokota, and this is the third reading. Okay, we got a motion by Colister, seconded by Lyon. Do you have anything you want to add?
Thank you, but no.
Okay. Okay, we have no discussion, take the roll.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item B is an ordinance, number 1215, an ordinance reserving 311 South Second Street, 307 South Second Street, and 305 South Second Street from R1 Residential to R2 Residential, and amending current city zoning map for the city of Macokota. And this is the second reading for this.
So moved.
What do we have?
Mark Mo, I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Lyon, seconded by Simonson. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Coleman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item C is ordinance number 1216, and it's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances for the City of Macokota, Iowa by adopting a new stop sign at Otto Street and Second Street. You want, anyone add?
I don't have anything further to add. I haven't heard any public complaints or public comments from us since our first reading.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Rick Earl? If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. We make it now to new business. Item A is a discussion and possible motion regarding a community project funds, fund application to the Office of Congresswoman Marionette Miller Meeks for the City of Macokota and the Macokota Fire Department.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll just take a couple minutes to explain this, and I intentionally put this much background on the agenda regarding this item on purpose. So, this funding source may or may not look familiar to you, but last year Congresswoman Ashley Hinson needed to support some area projects and did choose Macokota for $3.5 million to help out the sewer plant and help keep down some utility rates to help afford that project. Well, we're in a new district now, and that would be with Congresswoman Miller Meeks, and they started their annual process of thinking about how to recommend projects into the next federal budget. About a couple months ago, Chief Zymet, Chief Mulhouseen, our department heads, we kind of thought about, well, what could we pursue? And the four things in front of you made the most sense to us. One of them is no longer needed, unfortunately, due to some emergencies. The fourth in this list is assisting the fire department with an application for the replacement of their eventual rescue truck and seeking radio upgrades to go to the digital system. And that in total amounts to about $747,000. And on average, the Congresswoman's recommendation last year was about 1.3 million. We're a little short of that, and that's okay. I've been in communication with them in some advising role about how to put something together for consideration, and they like the fact that this is a fire protection district, and we have 144 square miles covered. I think there's a lot to be said about that, and then, of course, we have our own financial challenges here in the rise of capital equipment increasing in the future. So, a number of months ago, the Macokota Firefighters Association sent out direct mail notices to help with the fundraiser regarding this very rescue truck. I'm told that's going okay to good, and I think that's at least a show of good support that everyone cares about the fire department in replacing this, because eventually, what would be in front of the Macokota Firefighters Association or the city is a truck worth this much? And then what I worry about is 10, 20 years from now, we're going to have to be talking about a pretty expensive ladder once that starts falling out of compliance. And those today run anywhere from a million to a million and a half new, depending on what you get. And those prices aren't going to come down, they never will. So we need to be pushing this as far as we can, as aggressively as we can, and I hope to put together a good package for consideration. I think that the fire department has worked very good and very hard on putting together something for us to work with for this application. And tonight, seeking your consensus on what to propose, and if there's some other direction you'd like me to go, I'd receive it now. But to us, I think the fire department's in the best position of our city projects in the next one to two years to apply for this funding source.
Anybody have any questions?
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Coolman? Any discussion? Take the roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Item B is a resolution amending our employee handbook.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Judy can probably elaborate this a bit further than I can, but a couple months ago, we were contacted by our city attorney regarding the Pump Act that was passed by the state. And at the last Finance and Personnel Committee meeting, we hosted a discussion on what this is. It has nothing to do with us having any sort of employee issue here or local motivation. It's just us following what's in the state's Pump Act. So, we're proposing to add a Section 1.8 to identify that the city complies with the Pump Act and follow that language.
Okay, we have a motion by Alinger?
Second.
Seconded by Bennett? Any discussion? Take the roll.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item C is a resolution approving City of Macokota non-discrimination policy, limited English proficiency response policy, and designated the city manager of the City of Macokota as the City Non-Discrimination and Civil Rights Coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. On this one, again, related to what kind of our handbook, but also the EPA grant for the wastewater plant, we have to come into compliance with some non-discrimination policies that I could not answer that we fully do. We have them internally regarding non-discrimination, and this is about the external. And it's not all, it will be helpful for us in the event we do encounter a citizen or someone in the office that has limited English, and we're trying to figure out what language is being communicated. The backup in your packet tonight has language identification cards and sets a procedure in place for our staff to be able to bridge communication tools in case someone really cannot speak any sort of language that we're familiar with at all. And so in the event, if there's ever any instance of where someone feels discriminated against, there's a complaint procedure form, and I, I, the city manager position is being designated as the responsible official to investigate these things. A report, if there's discrimination complaints, will be owed to you. It would be the city manager's job to resolve the situation, to investigate it fully. If the person does not like the outcome or the remediation of what occurred, it would fall on the mayor to give a final ruling. If it goes beyond that, we would refer them to an agency outside of the city. But that's really what I have for you tonight regarding this. I've been working on it for several months. It does need to occur for EPA's compliance on this grant, or they may recall that $3.5 million. So, it is important for us to pass this, and I was given some modeling material for this policy by the EPA themselves.
Do we have a motion or questions? Oh, go ahead. No?
No question? So moved.
Okay, we got a motion by Alinger?
Second.
Seconded by Bennett? And we have no discussion, take the roll.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item D is a resolution approving change order number one in the amount of $789.30 for the YMCA branding contract with DCI Print.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Scott, ask Scott to be here tonight in case we're at all had questions regarding this. But in the YMCA currently, above the stairwells, you're going upstairs, is a pretty blank white wall. And part of the original bid for this was a graphic that was going to get printed out. It did get printed out. There's no way to install it currently right now, and we ended in a little bit of, I wouldn't call it conflict, but trying to figure out how we're going to get this in place. And so the YMCA is picking up the cost of the boom to get it in place. This is a $798 change order. At this point, I feel like it's a worthy effort to finish it. I mean, it's already printed at this point. The wall's fairly empty, and if you've been to the YMCA recently, you can see some of the nice graphics they put up. But for the point of this action item, it's a $798 change order. It's still well below the competing offers that occurred at the time of the resolution approval.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Lyon?
Second.
Seconded by Rick Earl? If there's no discussion, take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Okay, passes. Item E is a resolution approving the annual city real estate sales listing agreement with CBRE.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. If you were here two weeks ago, you may recall this exact item, and this is simple enough that the CBRE just didn't like the way Hubbo Realty was titled legally. So, there was a request by them to change Hubbo Realty to the CBRE Division. It's in the resolution language. So specifically, they wanted that in the resolution title. So, there's no other change here besides the entity name of Hubbo Realty.
Okay, we have a motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Alinger? And if we have no discussion, take the roll.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item F is a resolution authorizing the city clerk to make an appropriate transfer of sums and record the same in the appropriate manner for fiscal year 2324 for the City of Macokota, Iowa.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This one's related to a budget alteration for fiscal year 2324. We've built up some pretty good road use tax fund balances. I think you all know that, and that's why we're trying to spend down and well for road improvements. Part of this also is carrying over some general fund costs that can go to the road use tax fund. So what's in your resolution tonight are some simple general entry changes that Andrew has requested, and we considered at our Finance and Personnel Committee meeting. You may see another one of these before the end of the fiscal year, but this is a routine item for budget transfers.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Bennett? Do we have any discussion? Take the roll.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item G is a resolution approving plans, specifications, and form of contract for the East Water Tower painting project, setting a public hearing and authorizing invitation to bid.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Kevin, I've made you a co-host. So you'll be able to share your screen if you wish. Kevin Graves, the WHKS engineer on this water tower painting project and the wastewater plant. You may recognize him. He doesn't visit us too often, but we won't hold that against him. How are you, Kevin?
Good, thank you, Josh. We also have Kevin Pastala with us tonight, so you only, you got more than one Kevin from WHKS on the project. Your Kevin, Kevin Pastala works out of our Dubuque office and helped put together the plans for this water tower painting project. So I will see if I can share my screen. You guys can tell me if this shows up for you.
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Well, the city had asked us, WHKS, to evaluate your East Water Tower last summer. It had been, you know, over 20 years, I believe, was probably the mid-'90s or late-'90s last time the tower had been coated. And that's the, a typical timeframe for water tower coatings is, you know, hoping to get 15 to 20 years of life out of that typically. So you've done well in getting a good amount of wear, if you will, out of the current painting for the Macokota East Tower. I'm going to show a few different photos here tonight just for reference, and then ultimately, what we're asking is to set a bid, bid letting date, and contract award date or to move forward with recoding the tower to give it some additional life for you in the next years to come. So this first tower here shows us the East Tower in Macokota, and then in the foreground. In the background, you can also see your West Tower as well. So you do have those two towers on the system, which will make it much easier when it's, when we take this tower down for painting both inside and out, that it can stay offline for an extended period of time, and we should not see any sort of significant water out just within the community. Another item of note here with this photo is probably just showing the multiple antennas that you have located on this tower. That is another item of kind of added complexity to make sure that we are kind of helping the city staff in coordinating the removal and relocation of those antennas during the painting process, identifying which ones are absolutely necessary to remain in service and which ones can be taken off for a period of time during the process. So, next up is the, just a little bit of a close-up of the tower, showing some of the areas of concern that we have for the coating. You can see kind of above the, above the Macokota sign there on the curved portion, there's some areas that where the paint has delaminated and is showing some corrosion along with kind of the bolt pattern down below where we can, you can see some issues there. You can also, in this picture, you can see Kyle, our tower climber, that will visit up there here this early fall. We were hoping to get a photo of Mayor Messely also up there. He was, we almost got him to climb the tower, but at the last second declined politely, so maybe next time. This here, again, shows a little bit of a more close-up of that area of concern above the, in that curved section, showing that the paint is definitely in some need of repair, and I guess not a whole lot more to really discuss on that item. So, this photo here, wanted to just kind of show what it looks like from the ground looking up. This here is a good, a good visual of why I don't climb towers. One of the things, a couple things to, of note here, we do have a pretty big string of antennas, or excuse me, cables for the antennas that are hooked on to the ladder. This is, you know, kind of a safety concern and not recommended to have those installed that way, or we wanted to make sure we have kind of maximum space and ability for the climbers to hold on to the rungs of the ladder as they're walking up there. So, one of the items that we do have included in this project is to relocate those cables and have a separate spot offset from the access ladder for those to be residing. The other item of note that this picture shows pretty well is a little bit of the complexity of the exterior of the tower. So, this is a multi-legged tower as opposed to kind of the single pedestal ones that are maybe the newer style. But with these legs come a lot of bracing, a lot of tie rods, and that creates a lot of area, kind of surface area for the painters to have to sandblast, you know, clean off and then recoat. So, that part of it makes it a little bit more of a complex painting job than your, I guess, the single pedestal type of tower. Next up, just showing a little bit of a close-up again of some of the bolt pattern. You can see some of the corrosion that is there, paint delaminating, just kind of reinforcing that, yes, now is the, now is the time to be doing this project. And then lastly, this is the, we're planning to replace the existing lettering on the tower with this newer Macokota logo. Just one item of clarification is that the, kind of the gray area in the queue there that will actually be just black and white. So we won't have kind of that third color, but some of that is just for a little bit less complexity, meaning a little less cost for us to put that together. But we will have this logo attached or installed on the tower. So that was a, kind of in a nutshell, what we are, what we have identified as the kind of areas of concern. So we have developed a set of documents to go up to bid. It's primarily specifications. We kind of have some, not a lot of plan sheets per se, but a booklet of information for the different paint to be used by the contractor, the, you know, the requirement for surface preparation and how they're going to get that paint installed in a way that will last and be a good valuable product on that tower for the foreseeable future. Another item of note that I should mention is that what we're planning to do is an overcoat of the existing painting. So the contractor would not be blasting the entire paint structure that is on there now off and recoating it. They will be power washing, cleaning it off, and then prepping it in order to add another layer of paint on top of what is there. Reason being is that number one is a less costly alternative when it is available to us, and number two, there is existing lead within the tower coating that's there now that would require quite a bit more of a costly abatement process if we were to sandblast and recoat the entire tower.
Hey, Kevin?
Yes.
On that point, the current surface condition was good, at least, and with what we're dealing with, and that was not just your opinion, it was a potential contractor as well. Is that correct? That led you to believe an overcoat would apply in this, in this situation?
Correct. So we did some, we did kind of some sampling of the existing paint that is there during our visit. Kyle took some paint chips when he was up on the tower. And we also provided the photos and those paint chips to a coating specialist with Tenemic Coatings that reviewed that information and helped provide those recommendations to make sure that we were, that we were correct in our initial assumption that an overcoat is the recommended route to go here. Yep.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Coolman? Do we have any discussion?
My only question is how many days or hours is the tower going to be drained and emptied?
Did you catch that, Kevin?
I believe that was, how many, how many days or hours will the tower be out of service during the painting?
Yes.
Okay. I believe in our, in our contract documents, we're allowing the contractor to have that out of service for a total of 45 consecutive days. So, you know, once they're, once they start the project, we don't necessarily want them leaving town, going to do something else and coming back. So, you know, that clock starts ticking once they, we take that tower down and they mobilize on site to start performing the work. We have an overall completion date of fall of 2024 to give the contractor a relatively wide window so they can kind of come whenever they, when it works for their calendar. But we're looking at a, you know, at the most 45 days of that tower being out.
I have a question. You said that the current paint on there has lead in it and that there'll be sandblasting certain areas. Would that pose any risk to the public by, or is it going to be contained when they're sandblasting that lead paint off?
So that, so the actual surface preparation will primarily be the power washing to clean the surface as opposed to, instead of doing the sandblasting where that would be more of an issue. So if we were going to be doing a lot of that sandblasting and the lead paint was going to be coming off, and, you know, we would want, we would require the contractor to and, you know, we would want, we would require the contractor to have specific containment methods to to not allow that to to go out into the public spaces and and be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
But in the case of the overcoat, we'll we'll effectively be leaving that paint on there, power washing any kind of loose, loose areas. And so anything that does come off, the the contractor will be required to have some tarps down in the ground and and make sure it is, I guess, contained within that power washing process. If that makes sense.
Thank you.
There is a house that's right up against the base of that. Are they going to have to have some kind of plan to protect that house and the people who live there? It's right up against the base of that tower.
Right, right. And and we will be identifying that or making the contractor aware of that within the contract documents so that they that they know that they will need to take proper measures to to protect that accordingly, yes.
Typically, they drape these projects, Kevin, with, you know, a pretty large curtain or drape. Is that what's gonna be occurring here for protection?
So that part of that would be, you know, the the contractor's method, what they choose to do to protect. But we would, with that proximity being, the house proximity being that close, it it's more than likely that they would choose that, yes.
Anything else? If not, take the roll.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, move on to item H, which is a resolution approving street improvement services bid to River City Paving in the amount of four hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-six cents.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Onto onto some real good stuff here. So this is exciting to me, and the Public Works Committee talked over this at their last meeting. We had a pretty substantial list of streets to consider for for mill and fills, which is this item. This community started to see a lot of what that is in the city in our last season. Some of this work may begin in May and June, and our bill is expected to go out after July first. But the streets, in accordance with their street plan and some ones that came through Frank Allen's in some way as needing absolutely taken care of. And Jen, I think there was a hydrant that went down in one of these and completely ruined a cul-de-sac. Is on the list, but looking at Okita Drive, and I maybe I don't need to list them all off, but they're there if you need to review them further. But all in all, with the addition of franchise fees starting this year and into next year, too, plus our anticipated road use tax resources that we can spend for street improvements, we look at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue for the purpose of this type of work and some of the items that follow in this agenda. And River City Paving won this list out of all the bids, the other two competing at five eighty-seven and six seventy-two respectively. And they were, they were the clear winner. It's the same contractor as last year. I haven't had any public comments negatively about the street mill and fills that occurred here last year. Maybe the fact that they did it all in a week and a half or two weeks, all in one hit, but that's what you get when they're in town for a short amount of time. But some of these streets, it knocks off another pretty good portion of what WHKS had recommended to us for the ten-year street plan and will allow us to move on to some others next year, namely Quarry, some of the other things that could be occurring in town, possibly North Fifth Street. There's a person that recently asked in our, in my email, showing some pretty good photos and giving us a pretty good justification about why their street should be considered. And we're always open to hear those things at Public Works Committee or as street staff. But what's in front of you tonight is the work of about three or four months with the Public Works Committee, Frank working hard on gathering interest, answering questions, and our secretary Jan putting together all these bid tabs because there's quite a bit of information to process. Do you have any questions on what's in front of you tonight in this recommendation?
I do. Do they guarantee some of this work to say our, when we fill these certain areas? Do they put a warranty on that and say?
They do not, but the generally accepted life of a mill and fill, just doing nothing, about twenty years. At about year seven is when you'd want to do some version of a seal coating to, I guess, preserve its life. You can do that about once or twice over, and then you need to be thinking about redoing a mill and fill. And so that's why it's important that we maintain our roads, not just replace them as well. So we're trying to mix in sealing, crack filling, and then really kind of a more full-on replacement where we're tearing up the ground by about two or three inches and replacing with new, fresh, hot asphalt. I don't think anyone would give you a warranty in this instance because the ground shifts and there could be issues not necessarily that's on the city or the contractor about why a mill and fill went bad. You know, did the ground crack and cave in? Were there water issues underneath the street? Was the street not rocked appropriately? There's a whole number of different things.
Okay, we have a motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Lyon. Any more discussion? Take the roll.
Bennett.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item I is a resolution approving crack ceiling services bid to Minette's in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This this one's directly related to crack filling and filling in a lot of the cracks that you see that weeds come through. And so I've, I've, I've come to know Macau weeds all too well in my position. And so I, we're trying to make a stronger run at filling these things and and stopping weed growth in our city because ultimately that means that water and air is getting into the street and making that degradation process even faster. It's a little bit of a compounding effect. So what's in front of you tonight is filling the roadways on a lot of the streets that are listed in the next item, as well as taking a look at thirty-three thousand linear feet of curb lip grinding and then refilling that. So you're familiar with their street weeds in town and how they magically end up at the curb lips. It's because the cracking and the flaking allows that to happen. So what happens here is there's a router that goes along the curb lip, and we're calling out thirty-three thousand linear feet where it just grinds along the curb and it fills it up so that weed can't come through. Now, thirty-three thousand linear feet is not our entire city. Frank wanted about fifty thousand linear, I'm sorry, fifty thousand linear feet or a hundred thousand linear feet, and I told him, let's just see if this works, and maybe this is a better investment next year. But hopefully, we report good results out of this. But otherwise, these next two items are interrelated in that we're seeking to crack fill and then seal coat.
Okay, we had a motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. And if we have no discussion, take the roll.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item J is a resolution approving seal coating services bid to corrective asphalt materials in the amount of sixty thousand, five hundred thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a different seal coating contractor compared to who we've used. This one has conveniently provided a reference from DeKalb County, Illinois, which is where the first part of my professional career was. And I don't know them, but we know the same people. And I was able to speak with their highway engineer who just couldn't stop talking about this company. And they came out and said, this street's not good for what we want to do. This street is. And so they didn't try overselling Frank. And an example they had is East Locust Street. They wanted to do, Frank wanted to look at East Locust Street, and they said it's too far gone. They said, this is not good for our product of the list and what we wanted to do. This is what we ended up with as far as them using what they call the CRF. It's a grind in an asphalt and a tar that would go down, not a tar, but just kind of a more of a black substance similar to what we had. And it penetrates the streets similar to what we had before, and it's a proprietary material. So we only did get one single bid on this. But beyond DeKalb County, Frank met these folks at a trade show, and the city of Des Moines uses this company as well. And so city Des Moines has a lot of good things to say about the seal coder. Through my conversation with the highway engineer in DeKalb County, he said the price is really, really good for what you get in this. He said if he could sell his county board on doing more of this, he would. And he knows that there's some county engineers out there that put this material on a brand-new mill and fill street right away just to get a strong seal in right away. So I'm curious to see how this turns out. I know it's important work for us to do to maintain streets. But the objective is, as you know, as I've explained here tonight, to crack fill, take every attempt possible to make these streets as good as possible before this contractor visits and put this fresh seal down. So I'm sure John, the Public Works crew, is gonna be using their eighteen-inch grinder on those flaking edges. And we're gonna do a pretty good job with this. And if you're curious, you know, I would say that it's it's pretty logical to do the crack filling before sealing, and we're gonna make sure that's right.
Okay. Here we have a motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Coolman. Any discussion? Then take the roll.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
All right, that passes. Item K is a resolution committing forty thousand dollars payable out of the American Rescue Plan Act Fund for the purchase of a police interceptor utility all-wheel-drive base vehicle.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This item simply clean up. We ordered this on February sixth of last year. It was always intended to be an ARPA-supported purchase, but as Andrea, our finance clerk, is closing in on doing her final reporting for those federal funds, they would like to have us a resolution in place paired with a quote. We have a quote, we don't have a resolution, which is why it's in front of you tonight.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Alinger. And if we have no discussion, take the roll.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item I is a discussion and possible motion authorizing the mayor to sign the twenty-twenty-three Certified Local Government CLG Annual Report on behalf of the Historical Preservation Commission.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a routine item about this time every year. City staff owes the Certified Local Government Report regarding Historic Preservation Commission activities. That's what's in your backup tonight. I will say that recently Brad Karanda forwarded me an automated message about the Paul Brun Historic Grant, and we're gonna be aiming to complete a grant, and there's no local match required, but would allow the city to administer historic preservation grants. And it's really, it's very rare that Muscatine got this last year, and it's be interesting to see how they model their program. But it allows historic properties in town to do revitalization. The grant they would allow us to do is two hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand here, and then we would be the prime granting organization and then would work with local businesses or property owners to administer this grant. So it's an exciting opportunity. The reason I bring that up is we have to be a valid CLG to apply towards that. So that continues to happen here, and approval of this item will allow us to do so.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. And if we have no discussion, take the roll.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item M is a resolution approving confidential settlement agreement connected to Jackson County LACV zero-two-nine-one-zero-zero and LACV zero-two-nine-two-one-eight.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I didn't want to say too much or too little with this, so I wrote what I think is the most appropriate to keep this agreement confidential. This agreement isn't a public document. It's gonna remain confidential as permitted by law for the purpose of public knowledge. I think it's important to know that our wells are two thousand one hundred forty feet deep at a minimum, and there's no hazardous substance in water at all. And so we're at a point where I think we're very comfortable communicating that to folks, that showers are good and people are drinking good water.
So moved.
Second.
Here we have a motion by Colister, seconded by Bennett. And if we have no discussion, take the roll.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We made it to reports and communications. Do we have anything from any of the council members tonight?
Yeah, I wanted to wish Lady Cards good luck tomorrow out in Des Moines. We got, they're going out there to play and hopefully bring back some hardware. I personally have two family members that play on the team, and just want to say that we're really proud of what they've accomplished this year. They've all worked real hard and hopefully they win her.
I think the bowling team also is heading somewhere.
There you go. The girls are out there now, and the boys go out tomorrow.
Props to all sports.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go Cards.
City manager?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Okay, I'd accept a motion to adjourn. Motion by Rick Earl.
Second.
Seconded by Bennett.
You're pointing me a point.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or adjourn?